Okay, I call this meeting in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens, amen. Roll call please.
Allen?
Here.
Green?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Ms. Ravitch?
Here.
Reindell?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. Approval of minutes for the city council meeting of March 2nd would be in order.
Make the motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported, is there any discussion? Bein' not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments, I'd like the city manager to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to take a moment to update both the city council and the residents on the city's actions related to COVID-19 or the coronavirus disease. The city continues to work with Macomb County Emergency Management to stay updated on the COVID-19 and best practices. First and foremost, all of our essential services, police, fire, EMS, and DPW continue all in operations. There are no changes to essential services being provided at the city of Richmond. Please keep in mind as I go along on outlining some of the changes that are happening at our city hall, library, and community center, that as we've seen today, changes come out from state, federal, county governments on an hourly basis, so what I say tonight may change by tomorrow or the end of the week. But keeping that in mind, we are putting out information through our city website, cityofrichmond.net, as well as the Facebook pages through our Parks and Rec Library and Police Department, and we also recommend that the public monitors the state's website for the most recent updates from them, which is michigan.gov backslash coronavirus. In order to protect our residents and staff and slow the spread of the virus, we have made the following changes at the library, community center, and city hall. In accordance with the governor's executive order today, at this time, the Lois Wagner Memorial Library is closed to the public until Monday, April 6th. We're currently offering curbside service to patrons who wish to check out books, but again, as we go along and kind of delve into the executive order that was issued today, that may be subject to change. Please contact, our staff is reporting, so please call ahead at 727-2665 to make arrangements for pickup or to ask if they are still continuing the curbside service. All returned books should be returned through the Dropbox, and please bear in mind that due dates of all books checked out right now have been extended through April 8th, so while the library is closed or in our current closure, there's no reason to bring your books back. If that's all you're doing, the due dates have been extended. The recreation department, beginning Wednesday, March 18th, the Macomb County Office of Senior Services will be suspending the onsite dining locations for their senior meals and the Meals on Wheels. They will be utilizing paid county staff to deliver the home deliveries, so that will continue. But the meals at the community center will be suspended for 30 days, beginning Wednesday, March 18th. We continue to review recreation programming. Fortunately, right now, this is kind of our slow time as far as programming, we're between the winter and the summer programs, so we don't have that much on the books, but we continue to review those offerings and will be updating people through the website and the rec departments Facebook page, so please stay tuned to those sources if you're looking at some of the rec programming. We'll also put those notices out on our Channel 6 slideshow. Those, again, all of the notices that we've had the last few days have been uploaded to that Channel 6. As of today, city hall and the police department are open. At this time, the city Richmond requests that when possible, all utility payments be mailed in, paid online, or at the Dropbox. The online payments, again, is cityofrichmond.net, and down in the middle of the page, you'll see four buttons, one of those buttons is online payments. So if you have any questions on how to do that, or if it's your first time going through that process, call in to 727-7571, and our staff will help you make those payments. We would also request that any residents with routine questions, contact city staff by phone or email prior to coming to the city offices. Again, 727-7571. Often, many of the questions that we're receiving can be taken care of over the phone or through email, so just before you come in, make that extra phone call, that'd help us out a lot. We also ask that public wishing to dispose of their prescriptions, their old prescription drugs, through the Dropbox we have here inside this city lobby, or with recycled plastic bags that they've been bringing to city hall, community center, or the library, that we suspend those collections right now, for the time being. Again, for updated information on the COVID-19, please visit the state of Michigan's website, which is www.michigan.gov backslash coronavirus. And I just want to make sure everyone understands, essential services are continuing uninterrupted at the city.
Thank you, Jen. Was there any questions, council here? This point? Okay. We go back to audience comments, I believe everybody's on the agenda tonight?
Yep.
Yes, you're on the agenda.
You're on the agenda, so we'll call for you there. Okay, moving on, adoption of agenda. John, we have a change?
I do, I have the addition of, we'll call it item 1A, which would be consideration of extending the local state of emergency due to COVID-19.
Thank you. Any other changes, city council? Motion to accept the amended agenda would be in order?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Which has been made and supported, any discussion? Bein' not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported, there's no discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have 10 this evening. The first one on the amended agenda is the consideration of extending the local state of emergency. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider extending the local state of emergency that was declared by Mayor Tim Ricks prior to the council meeting tonight. Under the Stafford Act, the chief executive officer, which is the mayor in the case of the city of Richmond, is able to declare a local state of emergency. However, those local states of emergency have a timeline of seven days unless extended by the legislative body. City council's the legislative body. On a conference call that we had with Macomb County Emergency Management, they're recommending that we extend those for 90 days. We may eventually extend it beyond that time, we also can call it off earlier, but at the moment, we're requesting the council extend that mayor's declaration of emergency for an additional 90 days.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve the extending the local state of emergency that was declared by Mayor Tim Ricks, March 15th, 2020, for a period of 90 days.
Support.
What's been made and supported, is there discussion? John, you want to, could you explain to council why the state of emergency has been requested by the county?
Sure. Normally, when the county declares an emergency, which they have, it covers the local units of government that are under 10,000, but with all of the paperwork that may result from the current emergency, looking at possible wage replacement, possible funding for costs associated with overtime, or costs associated with purchasing personal protective gear for public safety, there's going to be a lot of FEMA paperwork, and if each individual legislative body has their own declaration, it will more than likely go smoother.
Very good. Good explanation. Very few words, too, given the fact that we're not supposed to be together real long here. Okay. Any other discussion on this? Any audience participation on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. The next item is consideration of special event request, pay it forward banner. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving a request from Kathy McCowsky to have a banner recognizing Pay It Forward Day. The council may remember Kathy came before us last June to have a mayor's proclamation approving recognizing National Pay It Forward Day. That day is April 28th, and it encourages people to do random acts of kindness, to kind of pay that forward. And Kathy, last year, had the proclamation signed and was invited to march in the Good Old Days Grand Parade, where they carried a smaller banner. Since then, they have obtained funding for and across the road banner, and I put out kind of a second, the updated version on your table tonight, which would be this bottom, more colorful version, and Kathy and Eric have created that.
Very good. Is there a motion before discussion?
I make a motion to approve the request from Kathy McCowsky to place a Pay It Forward banner over Main Street the two weeks leading up to Pay It Forward Day from Tuesday, April 14th through Tuesday, April 28th.
Support.
What's been made and supported.
Kathy, did you want to address the city council?
I just want to say thank you for the payday, and I think that this banner is going to be hung up at the most beautiful time. I'm really excited. I couldn't wait to get this banner hung. It's like I had to wait a whole year to get this up, and I thought, I don't understand why I got to wait a year, but okay, I understand why we had to wait a year. This banner is going to be exactly what our residents are going to need to look at on April 20th. Everybody's going to be exhausted physically, emotionally, and spiritually, and I think that this banner will give everybody hope and encouragement. I'm excited to get it hung up, and I want to thank you for letting us walk in the parade. We had a blast, and the kids enjoyed it, and I got to tell you, I thought we had plenty of candy, we had 100 pounds. Well, we didn't get very far with that 100 pounds of candy, and I thought, what are we going to do? And I looked down, and all these little baseball and football players, my grandson and the boys, they started high-fiving the people on the side of the road, and they were saying, be kind, pay it forward. Well, by the time we got so many feet up the road, everybody caught on, and they were all saying it, they were all chanting this, and I thought, what an awesome thing for these kids to be going to school in the next couple of days with this mentality. I loved it, and hope that we can be a part of it again this year. And that's it. I hope everybody stays healthy and well, and I look forward to getting this banner up and just encouraging our residents to get through this difficult time.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Back to the table? Anybody? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We look forward to that. Our next item is consideration of special event request, Pyro Joe's fireworks demonstration. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from Pyro Joe's to use a portion of the BB Street Park, including the Good Old Days Derby Pit, or potentially the field and a portion of the festival drive on Saturday, June 13th, 2020, at approximately 9:15 PM, to put on a fireworks demonstration. This is quite a few years, I think this may be the fifth year that they've done the demonstration. In the early years, they used the Derby Pit. Last year, due to construction at the Derby Pit, they slid down and used a portion of the field. Unfortunately, this year, we won't know for probably a month or so whether or not the Derby Pit's going to be under construction. Basically, the way I wrote the motion is kind of the Derby Pit, if available, if not, we'll slide them down to the same location as last year. But everything else, again, we have both maps from the two different layouts in front of you, and again, we've worked well with them in the past four years, and our recommendation is for approval.
Very good. Mike and Mary Ellen?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Just want to say, and it's obvious, you know, we don't know what's going to be happening in June, so we'll get, if we can get the approval, then I would think after Memorial Day, we'll be able to really, that first week of June, because we don't start advertising until Memorial Day weekend, we'll be able to tell by that time.
And if it's still a state of emergency or whatever.
Yeah, we'll just pass on it this year.
It's not.
Yeah.
We're not going to make a big deal.
Got to make the plans, just in case.
So that's the only thing I've been wondering, and I actually think about calling it off after I watched the press conference today, and I was, oh geez, why should we do this year?
Yeah, I know. We're looking at the festival itself.
And they're talking into July and August, so I don't even know what the fourth will bring, so.
Yeah, and that's just, should be coming back down, that's not the end of the...
So, you know, it's going to be a strange summer, but that's all. Same as if we can do in the Derby area, and then, you know, just a little bit of fire department presence there would be nice, in the event of anything, and then, I guess that's it. I'd prefer to be in the Derby area if we can.
Yeah. We just have to finish, we're going to try to finish the, would be the northwest wall, we're trying to connect the one that runs east and west, and the one that runs north and south on the west side of the track. We tried to connect that, and we ran out of material last year and time, so that's the only thing we would probably be doing out there is just that, which may have no effect.
May have no effect, all right.
Yeah.
All right, awesome. I mean, otherwise, I appreciate the city allowing us to do it, and when the weather's good, it's fun, and when it's raining, and it's damp, and cold, it's not that much fun.
No.
I'd prefer to have been home that evening.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's a fun event, and I think, you know, when we have the good weather, we have a fair amount of people out there, so.
Good. Any questions, council? Okay.
Well, just thank you for doing this, and it may just come at the right time.
All right, well, we know.
So we got to keep planning.
Yes.
Got to keep it going.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve the Pyro Joe's request to use the Derby Pit area if available, with the festival field area and BB Park as a backup on Saturday, June 13th, from 12:00 PM until Sunday, June 14th, at 2:00 PM, for a fireworks display on Saturday, and the closure of the portion of the festival drive on Saturday afternoon and evening.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion? One question, Mike and Mary Ellen. You want Sunday as a rain day?
We could do that. I wouldn't be opposed to that. I mean, school is, well, who knows where school will be, but school normally is out, so...
It's just harder to clean up on a weekday.
Well, we have in the past...
Does the pavilion run it? If anything, run it over there?
Actually, we've had rentals most times that they've done, and so somebody's graduation party normally gets a really nice fireworks demonstration.
I'm always telling them that we do.
We work with whoever rents it. Last year, when we had to slide them down to the field, we worked with the person who rented the community center to let them know, hey, kind of park around...
Yeah, and they were gone by...
I think that the bathrooms were not unlocked.
Oh, yeah.
Someone locked them back up right before.
Oh, okay.
It'd be nice to have the restrooms unlocked.
Yeah, it's on their request.
Can we look into that?
Yeah, I unlocked them the other...
No, no, no.
The Sunday is a...
Alternate?
Alternate.
That's fine with me, there was no Little League conflict.
I mean, I thought about it, because...
I mean, the only conflict we would have would be like a Little League event. The pavilion and the community center are often rented even on the Saturday that they go, so...
Yeah.
Put it down. Put it down. Change the motion.
We can, yeah, we can still change the motion. It hasn't been laid in stone yet. Rob, you made the motion, would you care to add to it at this point?
Add Sunday, June 14th as an alternate date.
Father's Day.
It is Father's Day.
It is.
Okay, is there still support? Was that you, John?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
That was you down there? Okay, we have ourselves a motion then. Barring any problems, if Little League does have a tournament, because they got to be so far away, and your set up time and everything else, work with us, you know, just in case. Hopefully, it'd be a beautiful weather Saturday, and we...
I hope so.
Tournament's before Crash at the weekend.
Before Crash at?
Yeah.
Oh, good, okay. Any other discussion, guys? Bein' not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck.
All right, awesome, thank you.
Consideration of special event request, Richmond Bees historical baseball team.
Council is scheduled to consider approving a special event request from the Richmond Bees Baseball Club. In 2015, the Richmond Bees Vintage Baseball Club began using the festival grounds at BB Street Park for their home games. The background brief, unfortunately in motion, has one clerical error. The second game is Saturday, July 11th, not Sunday.
Boy, it is Saturday. Oh.
It's Saturday.
I thought that, I assumed the date was wrong, because I thought you guys always played on Sundays.
Yeah, we normally do.
And I think that may be why it was wrong in the background.
Yeah.
It's Sunday, May 17th, but Saturday, July 11th.
Okay.
I did let Jamie know that there are rentals at the community center and pavilion that day.
Okay, okay.
In the past, made other arrangements when that's happened.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Richmond Bees request to use a portion of the festival grounds in BB Street Park on Sunday, May 17th, and Saturday, July 11th, subject to the following conditions, that the Richmond Bees are deemed to be historical reenactors, not an organized athletic league, and secondly, that the location of the games on the festival grounds may change due to ongoing work being done by the festival committee.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion?
There's a question in the background brief, it says to use a park for five games, but you only listed two. Is it just the two? Jane?
Yeah, it's just the two home games this year.
It said five in the background.
Yeah. And if you look on the email sent...
Yeah, I told, I was reading through it, I didn't know it approved five, it didn't matter, I was just curious which one I was...
I think we had five last year.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe so. Okay, any other discussion?
I have a question. So it says August, I'm looking at the email, August 2nd, Franklin's in Memphis. So does Memphis have a team, or are you using that as a home game?
Memphis does, kind, they have a quasi-team just for that day only. It's like, it's not organized.
That's their festival also, I believe.
Yeah.
Well, it's good, I was just glad that you heard that day.
They're kind of, we're trying to get more interest, you know, fun, educational, any opportunity, any town that lets them come and share the love of the roots of it and reenact it, they, they're out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four, consideration of bid award Madison Street Improvement Project. Mr. City Manager?
The 1920 budget includes funds for the reconstruction of Madison Street. Now, the project includes replacing the Hot McSass asphalt pavement section, utilizing the existing concrete curb along with the sidewalk and driveway improvements. Madison Street received a significant amount of cold patch in recent years, and is a primary route for residents in the north end of town. You may notice that the bids were a little higher than what we had anticipated, but that was due to the addition of some sidewalk work, where the sidewalks go through some of the drive approaches, the pitch is incorrect for ADA compliance, and then, the background brief is correct all the way down to the motion, and then in the motion, the numbers are correct, but the contractor, the low bidder, is Aztec Asphalt, who also received the bid award for the Pierce Street project.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize the expense of $359,290 to Aztec Asphalt for the reconstruction of Madison Street with expenses charged, the appropriate line item in the local street fund.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. Any discussion?
As mentioned, this contractor also is doing the Pierce Street, which is a couple blocks to the north. The contractor that was listed in the motion actually has the 31 Mile Road project. I think I was just transposing.
Any other discussion?
I will say that the contractor, I believe, intends on doing these projects early in May.
Early in May? Okay, great. Very good. Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of bid award for 31 Mile Road reconstruction. Mr. City Manager?
The 1920 budget includes funds for the reconstruction of 31 Mile Road. This project includes the replacement of 1,000 feet of water main, pulverizing the existing asphalt, leaving that in place and regrading it, which will then become the base for the new road, and then placing the new road over top of that. There will also be some culvert replacement and disgrading, and Telfa Contracting is the low bidder.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the expenses of $485,831 to Telfa Contracting for the reconstruction of 31 Mile Road with expenses charged, the appropriate light items within the local street and water pumps.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. Any discussion?
I would just add that this project, the contractor hopes to begin in early April. As council knows, normally with road projects, we do a public information meeting. This one would need to be happened at the end of this month, but unfortunately, obviously with what's going on now, public assembly, we may not be able to hold that public information meeting. If that's the case, what we'll do is we'll beef up the letter that goes to residents in a request that they call Jim directly, the Public Service Director, directly to have their questions answered. Again, we're kind of rolling with what's happening currently.
Yeah. I'm sure the church will be affected, and the shopping center...
Yep, and the shopping center, and pretty much what we're asking is that, like, the shopping center, that they reroute their deliveries not to utilize 31, but to utilize their parking lots, and, you know, the church, I think, can come in off of Crash It. For the most part, passenger cars, the road will be open to traffic, you know, we did this type of project on Dow Street where we pulverized the road and kept it in place and put over, and so it goes relatively smoothly.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We look forward to those projects. Item number six, consideration of bid award, parking lot light fixture replacement. Mr. City Manager?
The 1920 budget includes funds to replace 17 parking lights here at city hall. These are the kind of tall aluminum poles that you see around the parking lot. We also intend at a later date to award a project for the two decorative poles that are up by the entrance to city hall, but these are the ones that are outside along the driveways in the parking lot. Jim Gutzinger, our Public Works Director, bid out the supplies and also the electrical portion of the work. The low bidder on the supplies was Ray Electric, and the low bidder on the install price was ACDC Electric. The existing poles will be utilized, the fixtures will be matched the color of the poles, and then those fixtures that run along kind of the front of city hall, where the back of the fixture would face Division Road, will have three of those that will actually have a shield that will hang down to kind of prevent the light from blinding drivers on Division Road.
Very good. Do we have a motion before discussion?
I make a motion to authorize the expense of... I make a motion to authorize the expense of $6,001 for the purchase of replacement parking lot lamps from Ray Electric, with expenses charged to the appropriate line items and general sanitary sewer water and Tifa funds.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion? Should lighten things up quite a bit around here.
Yes, yeah, it's a pretty dark parking lot, I think those old fixtures just don't produce what they should.
Yeah, are those the original?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Like everything else that...
They're very difficult to maintain.
We've replaced just about everything, haven't we?
Yeah, yeah, we're getting there.
Yeah, uh-huh, okay, any other discussion?
Will we see a separate motion for when we decide on the front?
Yes, correct.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, we need a second motion here to authorize the expense for the installation of those lights, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the expense of $1,724 for the installation of replacement parking lot lamps by ACDC Electric, with the expense charged to all the appropriate line items.
Support.
What's been made and supported, take your choice, John?
I will.
Guys, at the second meeting, you guys have been in unison down there, they must practice during the week or something.
Perfect harmony.
Any discussion on this motion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number seven is consideration of appointing a council liaison to the Recreation Board, Mr. City Manager.
Council's scheduled to consider making the appointment of an ex-officio member on the Recreation Board, the current term expires March 31st, 2020, and Mayor Ricks is currently serving as that member.
Thank you, is there a motion, or would council like to suspend?
No, I'll just make a motion to appoint Tim Ricks as a city council ex-officio member on the Recreation Board, with the expiration date of March 31st, 2021.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion?
We didn't want you to talk us out.
Yeah, I was opening the door there.
Jump on that.
I was opening the door. I do enjoy that, but when, when I can make it, I do enjoy it, and given there is no spring season for high school softball at, at the moment, it'll make it even easier for me to catch these spring meetings that I haven't been able to catch in a number of years, so appreciate the support. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, thank you. Item number eight is consideration of Recreation Board appointments, Mr. City Manager.
Council's scheduled to consider making two appointments, or reappointments to the Recreation Board, both Michelle Aiken and Lenore Warren, whose terms expire March 31st, 2020, have resubmitted their applications.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I make a motion to reappoint Michelle Aiken to the Recreation Board for a two-year term, with the expiration date of March 31st, 2022. Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion? I think she's done a great job on there, and has made the majority of the meetings, which has been very hard for some of the members to make. I'm glad she's back.
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, we have one more.
I'll make a motion to appoint, reappoint Lenore Warren to the Recreation Board for a two-year term, with the expiration date of March 31st, 2022. Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion on this one? John, don't you want to say something really nice about your wife?
No.
Come on, come on.
I have.
Again, she, she makes many, many meetings, given her busy schedule, and we appreciate her coming back again for another two years.
I thought you'd want to make that motion.
Sure, yeah, yeah. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, and again, we thank Lenore also.
I just...
For reappointing here.
On one note with that, she did say, if needed, she would consider any other boards, so we want to take note of that.
Yep, oh, yeah. I have, there's a few of those I have on my desk at home. Item number nine is consideration of special event requests, Richmond Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Sale, Mr. City Manager.
Council's scheduled to consider approving the requests received from the Richmond Knights of Columbus to conduct their annual Tootsie Roll Sale on Friday, April 3rd, and Saturday, April 4th, administration, as always, would recommend that we, well, school will be out.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the requests received from the Richmond Knights of Columbus to conduct their Tootsie Roll Sale at the intersections of Main, Division, and County Line Road, St. Clair Highway, City Side, on Friday, April 3rd, Saturday, April 4th, 2020, from dawn to dusk, that the Knights of Columbus agree to not be in Main Street Division intersection on Friday, the 12th, from 2:30 to 3:30 p.m., and further, the Knights of Columbus agree to sign a liability waiver.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, the city manager alluded to it, the fact that school will be out, so they don't necessarily need to be off of the streets between 2:30 and 3:30 on Friday, but they might anyway, just out of habit, and maybe to keep them with that in mind for future years, so I think it's okay to leave it in there.
Do you?
Yep.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, we hope for good weather there for those people. We move on to miscellaneous matters from the city manager, sir.
Tonight, before council leaves, I do have an updated resolution for the 100th proclamation, there was a mistake on it, so you can sign that before you leave.
Very good, move on, council comments, Rob?
Nothing.
Yeah?
Nothing.
Emily?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I just would like to bring up the Easter egg scramble with what we just declared earlier, in that falling on April 4th.
Sure, yeah.
That's something we should make residents aware, that's...
We will be, as, as we move forward, I haven't formally canceled that with Margot, but more than likely, that will be canceled.
Okay.
We have two meetings this month, for the remainder of the month of Boards and Commissions, the EDC later this week, and the Tifa Board on Wednesday, neither board has agenda items that couldn't be pushed to the following month, and we've already had people start to call in and cancel from those meetings, so I'll be putting something out to council on all three of those programs, of those meetings or events that likely will be canceled.
Okay, thank you.
Jamie?
I just want to encourage everybody to just think about your neighbors, I had, we have some elderly neighbors that literally do not have toilet paper, and, I hate to say spare a square, but I brought them over eight rolls, because I collect toilet paper buttons, so just please keep in mind to share, check on them, please check on them, to make sure they're okay and that they're eating.
Very good. Dennis?
Hold up. Cool. Uh, just one additional thing, I really appreciate the administration and the police department for getting the over the speed limit electronic display that's out there now, so I think that's a great addition we planned for in our budget, I know the police chief was after us to get that, so that's really good, I guess I have a question, maybe, because people have been asking, okay, well, where's it going to go next, and when can we get it on our streets?
Have them email myself, we have a list that I've compiled from...
If they want to add to it, then...
Yeah, if they want to make suggestions, have them email the city manager.
Okay.
But it sounds right now as though the next location probably is going to be Pound Road.
Going down the list of where we talked about originally, yes.
Yeah, 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 we've had enough complaints over the years.
For sure.
Especially since we repaved it and redid the street, so, yeah.
And I know the church on that street did volunteer for us to put it there.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Forgot what event that was, but he was...
Yeah.
Anyway, that's it, thank you.
Okay, yeah, you know, we did, you know, we're in a state of, I guess, flux, you know, we're hearing all these horrible things that are happening in other countries, the death rate and everything else from the COVID-19, I think we definitely need to take it seriously. If we don't make these moves that we're making now, we can be left out of a lot of services from the county and the state, so we need to, we need to move on these things. John and I watched, the Michigan Municipal League put on a webinar today, there's another one at 2:00 that we're going to watch, and if you watch the TV stations, it's, it's like every hour it changes, you know, something else is, is coming at us, and quite often, what, you know, the president or the governor talks about, if they haven't mandated it, they mandate it within 24 to 48 hours, so it is very serious, it is, they're trying to slow it down, and, and all for good reasons, from everything that we've been able to see now, searching for that cure, but that's going to be a while, in reality, and so we need to, we need to somewhat isolate, that's how this thing gets slowed down, and especially for the older people, so if somebody is just saying, hey, you know, I can't make it, or, or, yeah, not today, or something, there may be a reason, maybe their immune system isn't up to snuff, it could be 15 years old, it could be 60 years old, whatever, it happens to many of us, and we compromise ourselves by getting out in the community, and as much as many of us would like to still be out there and, and recreate and, and have fun, and, and go out to eat, and go to the movies, and go to the bar and everything else that we all like to do, it's one of those things we're just not going to be allowed to do, and I believe it's for good reasons, from everything that we've been able to hear and read and see on the webinars that the Michigan Municipal League has put out, it's a very, very serious, it's not a, it's not something that we want to cause hysteria over, but you have to consider it, and if, I believe if we consider the basics of what they're telling us, then hopefully we can spread this out over a long period of time, so that it's not so devastating if it does hit us, so it is close to home, and we want to make sure that it doesn't get any closer than where it's at, hard hit, so if we can do that by staying somewhat isolated, and, and using the six-foot rule, hopefully we can get through this, you know, together. The other one that I've talked with the city manager about is our businesses, our restaurants now, and our bars, some of the workout businesses, for lack of better words, the Rack, Anytime Fitness, those, they have now been closed down, the latest thing as of today, many of these things are being closed down, and we definitely feel, you know, bad for them, so I know some of the restaurants are talking about having drive-through windows, that don't have drive-through windows, I've asked John to, to, you know, look into that, how can we help? Can we, you know, do we, you know, that one time when we had the big downturn, we allowed more signage on Main Street, it's not that we ever stopped that, but we kind of curtailed some of the wild and crazy stuff that people were doing with signs, I think now is a time that we need to help the businesses as much as we can, and I've asked John on behalf of the council to take a look at that again and see what we can do, maybe working with the chamber, we can come up with some ideas, what will better help the, the businesses in our community, to try to, try to stay alive, because I don't think it's going to get any better, in my personal opinion, I don't think it's going to get any better anytime soon, so pray for everybody, and as Jamie said, you know, help your neighbors whenever you can, and as we heard tonight, be kind, pay it forward. So let's go to the calendar, today being the 16th, I hope everybody can make the best of it, tomorrow is St. Patty's Day, I'm sure there's been people that have had to change their directions tomorrow, I'm not sure if your barn was open tomorrow, but happy St. Patty's Day, the EDC mayor may not be meeting this Thursday, the 19th, at 7:00 here at City Hall, as well as Tifa on the 25th, at 7:00 here at City Hall. We, it brings us into April, as mentioned, the Easter egg scramble, the annual is 10:30 a.m. on Saturday, the 4th, that could be canceled, again, we should be able to post all of this on social media.
Correct.
City Council, unless something changes, will meet two weeks from tonight, right here at City Hall, at 7:00, and, you know, the schools are, are closed through to the 13th, the 12th being Easter, so right now officially, the state has closed the schools through to the 6th, and Richmond has spring break, the 6th through the 12th, so we'll see what happens there also, and that's about it for right now, stay safe. Is there any other business of the city council this evening? If not, motion adjourned, be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
What's been made and supported, there's no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, thank you for being with us.